Okay, well firstly, welcome to the Town Centre Events Committee on the 21st of February. This year, it seems to be flying past us very quickly, doesn't it? But we've got a reasonably interesting agenda tonight and I'm sure you'll make all the right decisions. And I'll turn. As you have to go in now, don't you unlock them to do most mundane things. So something, do apologise for that. It gives you a chance to laugh at me, which is always a good one. No, okay, right, so we move on to, we've got no public session. We were supposed to have people come, but they cancelled, so that's, they're right. Of course, they can come to the Tuesday meeting if they wish to. And we're here to hear what they want to say. But we won't talk about what they're going to say because they're not here. So with that, we'll move on to item one, apologies for absence. Have you got any absences today?
Mr Dean Jones.
Mr Dean Jones. Happy to accept this apology.
Yep.
Thank you.
And councillor Willie Boulden.
We definitely love you, don't we?
If you're there, well, you can give your answer. Item two.
I haven't, but.
I don't.
Declaration to interest on the agenda. I don't think there is any prejudice interest on the agenda. Anything is, I know Margaret already declared that she's on the twinning association, but that's not prejudiced. But that's a good thing that we need to, that thing. If we move on to the minutes, we've got two sets of minutes to agree. Which is the minutes on 13th December, which are indirectly linked to items on the agenda in the sense that you will recall that we agreed to purchase the signs for the twinning. Is there any update on that?
We hope that they'll be in place before the twinning event. So highways are working towards that aim.
If you remember, we discussed it and decided that rather than delay it by that of all council, we used the budget to purchase them. So I think at very least, will we get the sign for the one outside the town?
That's us.
That's us, oh, well, I couldn't see it.
But we're maybe informing you, so don't tell anybody that.
I won't tell anyone, no one's listening. Well, I hope they're listening, but yeah, that's brilliant. And on the 7th of February, we're happy to agree those minutes just.
Yes.
And the 7th of February minutes that you've got, again, lead to the civic slightly. Have we progressed that funding? Has that gone in?
Yes, yeah. Items have been ordered.
Items have been ordered, so all those items on the agenda, which some of them are to do sport, civic service and entertainment and stuff like, will be added into our event schedule. So are we happy to agree those?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Action list, which is attached. I'll give you a few minutes to look at the action list rather than ban you through it. Is there anything on there that, Margaret?
I'm sorry, I know it's on the agenda about the twinning, but because it says the formal signing of the twinning agreement. Because when we thought it was going to be in October, there was some concern about the whereabouts of the paperwork, wasn't there? I presume that you've got it.
Copy of the general one, somebody know.
Fantastic. I just thought, well, I thought about it from seeing it on.
Well, that's always a good thing, that paper, well said. We hadn't got paper.
Okay. It was about the accessibility workshop.
Yeah.
It's only access for all that's going to be contacted. And we have spoken before that access isn't restricted to people with mobility issues. It's also care as trans and the rest of it. So I wondered if we could do social media and also put out like a little flyer or something in Lacey Hill or on a notice board or something, and also the youth club, because there's the preschool that are in there every day. And young carers, you've got the adult carers that they also have issues. They don't necessarily have to go to the access for all group to have issues. So there's other groups there that perhaps we can reach out to.
Very good point. So anybody else, any other groups, anything with that?
Can I?
Yeah.
Something like that, that's really helpful. So I've read to the access for all group and we've gotten their response a few weeks ago. I'm sure that's a good example of a group that has absolutely not been going out and about, which would explain that. So this actually is to get you together to talk about how to run a workshop. So yeah, it's a bit chicken and egg, but because accessibility could cover everything and be everything. We don't want to narrow it down and make it exclusive.
Yeah.
I agree with that. So it probably need a bit of steering for members into it. Because if we just put it out to the public, saying you're going to have a meeting about what we'll do about accessibility, that is a very open-ended question. We might.
There's lots of open-ended.
It is, so I suppose my question is, would that be something which you would rather discuss in the general right of members in terms of who to go to and how to take it forwards? Or would you rather we just put it out there as a very open-ended kind of, we want to do something about accessibility?
I think, I've had to give a, what we're talking about, members' work, and what I made, that's perfectly acceptable. The, people have got jobs to do, they have to manage their own lives and it's, and the council meeting is a duty that you've got there. What we were talking about was access for all and the, and what Lisa was saying about that we were just going to go to one group and that we need to think about any others so that you could join in on the discussions.
I was thinking about carers, like the adult carers group.
Cut you out with that discussion.
And young carers and who else was there, parent toddler groups, anybody that, you know, might have issues. It isn't restricted to people in wheelchairs and mobility issues.
Okay.
Our members content to go with that, I mean, we can. The carers are meeting now, which on a, I think on a Wednesday here and every month. So there is an opportunity, one of us is free on Wednesday, to go in there and tell them about what our intentions are. Because that generation, or Margaret, another people know, when you meet them, they're not going to be doing social media. They're not going to be doing that. They might appreciate a councillor coming in and telling them what it's about.
Thanks for offering, Robin. Did you volunteer yourself for the Wednesday?
No, I'm maybe in a meeting an hour or two a day, that's the problem. Like other people are doing, but I mean, we're a committee, it's not, I'm happy to do it, of course I am. But I really think it'd be better if somebody else goes to talk to my mother than me. I don't think that's probably not a good thing, you know, my mother's in there. I've never found it successful. Margaret?
I think there's, the other group is open house, which is, that's for people who've been carers, but maybe the person they looked after has died, that's maybe more people on their own. It's not really grieving, I think it's just people to get together. And I am going to speak to them very soon, so I could mention it to them, trying to find the date. The 3rd of March, I'm going to speak to them.
I know Mrs Penny and Mr Penny Williams were quite interested in that for some time back.
Yeah, I think she's ill.
That's correct, I'm not just making that up.
No, I believe that's the case, but I understand she's recovered early on.
So if you're able to do that, and we, and Paul gets the date and makes it available to members who are available. Of course, I will go, but I don't think it's really good to stand up there and lecture my mother, is it? It's not going to work.
I don't think anybody will mletch you.
No, I don't think it's going to work. Really not going to go well. But yeah, if we do that, and there was anything else on the action list members are concerned about? That was a good point. Okay, so are we happy to, the one thing which is quite a concern on there is the 15 stroke 21. We haven't heard, to the best of my knowledge, about the diversity and multicultural evening. Have we had anything back?
No, that's because I wasn't going to do anything about that until we've had the diversity group meet. The diversity group hasn't been scheduled in yet.
Okay, so that's not that we haven't done anything, we haven't communicated, it just hasn't actually happened. So that's fine, it's just that it was an aspiration that we did it and we need to, we have to agree still it. Okay, so we'll work that out. Anything else, we've agreed that we look at accommodate, we can talk about that later. So anything else on there is fine, if everybody's happy with that. We'll move on to review of events, which I'll hand over to Amanda, who's going to take me through the Christmas parade. Is that okay, Margaret?
Yep, that's fine. First one is the Christmas parade, which was on the 11th of December. We had a good turnout of floats and I'm not sure how many councillors were in the parade. There was quite a few. We used Amberon Traffic Management to help us with the road closure. They were up on the Strackford Road roundabout, helping with the traffic there. We also had Borg, the Buckinghamshire Offroad Group, come and help us. And they're very good, so they were down at Lloyd's Bank, that corner there, that junction. Because obviously we turned Castle Street and school lane to a one-way system. So they were able to assist with that. We have got a recommendation, because we seem to be struggling a little bit to get marshals. Howard goes out to the Rotary and gets some from there, but we've, we've got quite a few that hadn't done it before and pairing them up. But it's also recommended that we talk to the Buckinghamshire, Oxfordshire Offroad Group Borg, to see if they would be able to supply additional marshals and vehicles for this year's parade, because they were a good help. We'd also got walkie-talkies for use by the town council and they were a good help, the range of coverage. I think it was Lee was up on top of. Who was he?
He was in town centre.
No, he wasn't.
Wasn't he? Okay. Anyway, where?
Yeah, anyway, he was down that end.
Yeah, down that end, which sounds really convincing.
And I was on Castle Street at one point and was able to speak to him. I didn't just arrive this way, he was top of the main road. So the coverage for the walkie-talkies was good, so we're going to be taking notes at all events now.
If members recall, discuss that, that there was a communication, they're using mobile phones at events, really isn't ideal. Because people hear the phone ring, turn it off and don't hear, well, if you've got a walkie-talkie and you're doing it then, it's so much better. I think, can we just make a note, if members agree that those people who are event coordinators or committee member should have one? If they are leading on an event, if it's somewhere so they can hear what's going on. Otherwise, they're left out of the loop and they shouldn't be. Would you agree with that, Andy?
I'm just wondering, these walkie-talkies, do they have airpisses or are they just purely handled?
They've got airpisses.
That makes a big difference.
Yeah, in fact, for the Holocaust Memorial Event, Jodie, myself and Robin, Taylor Deere, Green Spaces team, used the walkie-talkies and that was quite helpful because Jodie and I were one end of the event logs and Robin was in the Borton Park car park.
I've seen the dog show as well, I'd be quite used to that.
Perfect for that, yeah. On fan fireworks.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's in the dark, you can't see them.
Andy can give us darkened tones of where he is. And I haven't entrusted with one yet, but it's a shame. I'm sure I could make, I'm sure I could make good use of it.
Subject to discussion.
They're making a viewpoint. Essentially operated.
I know it wasn't exactly the Christmas parade, but we haven't got the Christmas fair review, have we?
No, because Castle Hetherington had given a verbal.
Okay, last time.
Okay. Give it all at the meeting. Just on that, from the point of view of the mayor, was there any points that you were happy with it the way it went? And handed prizes out, how we'd said wanted it to be? That worked well?
Yeah, no, it was good, I really enjoyed it because I haven't seen the parade for many years because I'm usually in the fair. No, it was really good. I had quite a few people telling me differently what I should and shouldn't be doing, I have to say, which wasn't terribly helpful on the day, mainly previous mayors who said, well, I'm doing it, I need it like this, you need to do that. And then another one would say, oh, I did it like this. So I thought, so anyway, I did it the way I wanted to do it.
I mean, it was great that we got the community back out again. My point of view, I think we need to, for the, starting, we probably need to, we've agreed the amount of money which we're giving them, which is pretty valuable, 284 pounds 41 pence, which, I think we need a breakdown of what that actually paid for. I think that to actually, because the resources committee can ask why there isn't a breakdown of why what we paid for. And as the chairman of resources, you know, it'd be very listen me not to actually say that. I think we do, because it is public money and we need to see if we have what. And the other thing which seems to have happened as a custom and practice, of course, the mayor always, historically, been doing fair trade in the community halls, as you may see. But I think we're moving further and further down the actual parade now. I'm not sure quite why that is, so we seem to have been two parades. Yeah. Around a military parade, which takes the main bit from the town. Where historically, I was fortunate, and I think other people were in their times as mayor, that we led the parade. And now we seem to be moving further and further down the parade, as we fund it. I don't think it's too unworthy a position to actually ask for the mayor, he or she, to actually lead the parade because it's a town event. We're down the parade, it seems like the, the collection of vintage vehicles of indeterminate age and more seem to have taken, maybe we should just try to focus on the Christmas parade as a suggestion, that the Christmas parade leads the parade and the military vehicles follow on. Because I didn't think it's, I wouldn't personally, I've noticed we moved them down. I think it's important that people get to see them there and they get to see them at Christmas and it's a big occasion. And that's what I think we should ask for.
Okay, thank you. I just, I think there's an argument, is it the pipe band that goes first, you know, is the first?
Yes, in front of us.
Sorry?
They always go in front of the mayor.
In front of the mayor, that's what I meant, the pipe band first.
The army.
Yeah. Because you need that music first, don't you?
We've always had the pipe band, it's always been quite nice. It seems to have changed and evolved since, I think the celebration, not celebration, the commemoration of the end of the different wars. And then we've had this add-in and they come in and they do provide a visual benefit to the parade. And it's no doubt they raise money for their charities, but I always think it's a bit of a shame because the children who are in the groups organising the parade follow them. So if you were a mother waiting to see a group organising, you want to see those before you see in the military. So would members agree that we asked that they reorder the parade back to its historical position? Because I think it's important that the mayor, or mayor of Buckingham, is seen at the front of the parade. Councillor, on you.
Thank you. Do we know the order now, has anybody asked them that question or we're just taking it?
Coming to you.
Yeah.
No. They weren't even sort of barging.
No, but I think it's the right time.
I agree.
I think we need to be careful, you know, because they are the ones that, we could express a view, but I'm not sure about, you know, that we don't want to them then say, well, you run it, that kind of thing.
We've had all that before, I've been through that scenario before. I could give you, I've got another scar on my back from the parade, so there's Amanda. Over the years that I don't want to go into them, but I've had lots of scars on that. But basically, it's about, I see it as a town event. I see that the mayor of Buckingham, she or he, is the leading civic person in Buckingham. And they really should be seen first in the parade, because that's the only, very few opportunities in there to meet your constituents and it's important. I know, I said doing it gently, Margaret, not in a strategy nor a butts way, but I do think it's appropriate, councillor.
Yeah, I've never seen a parade before and I was quite taken aback half of the order that the town council with the mayor and her entourage were put. And it also meant that it was quite difficult for Margaret to then get back to the position to be able to hand out prizes and.
I'm glad you said that because it's not just me thinking this, I mean, you know, Andy and I, Andy and you.
I know I'm not right to speak, but it seems to me that might be a useful argument to put forward, a practical argument, which wouldn't ruffle people's feathers too much, saying like, you know, for a number of reasons. But this practical one, where the mayor actually ought to be a little bit further ahead in the parade, just so she doesn't have to run like crazy in order to be at the place and then to give up prizes.
Okay, so that's about you, Lisa.
I didn't see it at all, but I can well imagine that with lots of people being in fancy dress kind of thing, people could almost mistake the mayor for a fancy dress. So I think she should be in the front.
Thank you, Lisa, Rubina.
Thank you, just to say that you are allowed to speak, you're still not entitled, but you are, just you can't vote.
I'm never going to stop anyone's talk. Lisa, you're going to speak? I'll, I'll, Rubina.
I didn't go to the last one because I wasn't around, but I've been to quite a few because my kids used to take part in all of them. And I don't remember the mess floats at all.
Floats? It's a bit of a float.
No, it's not a float.
Walking.
Talking.
Yeah.
It's, it's, Andy.
Because I have done it and the year I was mayor, I did with John Burco because he came along as well. You know, yes, we were in the front, behind the first band and that was how it was done. So now it's, you know, as you're right, we've been pushed back.
I think it changed the year we had the vocals.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's when it changed.
But that went in front, but it was on its own because.
Only because it was temperamental.
Only because it was temperamental.
And then I followed in the car behind and forced car, I think it was.
But we were never that far back.
No, no, not at all.
There also was a separate group of councillors informed at one point in front of the mayor.
I've got photographs of it, so I can always see it.
Yeah, so, which seemed to be strange, so Lisa. But I think it's a funded event, I do, members happy that we asked for those two things politely, in Andy's sensible approach, Margaret's approach is that we think it'd be better for the function of the fair, not the fair of the parade.
Prize giving.
The prize giving and that we'd just like a breakdown of who they are and thank them for all their work. Would that be a reasonable way for it? Any differences with that, Rubina?
No, I was just going to ask, sorry for my ignorance, who organises the actual line-up and the procession?
Will we fund the Christmas parade?
Yeah.
Because it wouldn't happen if we didn't, the town council staff organised the road closure of the parade and our staff basically facilitate the legal side of the parade as it's a council event. And we fund the Christmas parade committee to provide a parade within an event, but when we discuss it, it gets into semantics, which is a community event that we support, I think that's the language we use, so we don't upset anybody. And, and as it's a funded event, I think we've got a reasonable ability to make sense of just public money. We need to see, and I'm always one to protect in the civic position. Are we happy to go along with that?
Then it's organised then by the parade committee.
Parade committee, yeah.
We're happy with that and if any members, I mean, happy to draw a letter on that basis.
Yeah.
Is that agreed?
And we have, we have a councillor on that committee, so you know, it's not that they're committee on their, on their own. Then there is, I would want you as the chairman.
I mean, he will understand, he's been mayor twice, so he should understand. So that's fine, so in this case, we're happy with that and thank you for your report. And we want to 5.2, which is the Holocaust Memorial Day. Amanda can lead us through that slightly, just, we'll get on, talk about it then.
Okay, the Holocaust Memorial Day was held on the 27th of January. We have a stone that has been put in Borton Park over by the mugger. The event was well-attended, it was going to be a low-key event and we invited a few people and there it spread. Those that attended were MP Greg Smith, Mr Anson, the High Sheriff of Buckinghamshire, Countess Howe, the Lord Lieutenant of Buckinghamshire, councillor Dylan, Vice Chair of Buckinghamshire, councillor Warren White, and then members from the town council.
You missed councillor Anthony Ralph. Councillor Anthony Ralph was there.
Yes, okay, and also councillor John Harvey was there.
And I was there.
And Andy was there.
And I was there.
And Andy was there, yes.
I'm hoping it's on the list.
I was at work.
You were, you were on there.
There was a very good turnout of councillors, so it was nice to see them.
But some of, maybe not everybody, but Anya and Rubina are both on the list of attendees and you saw you. But I don't think Andy is.
Yeah, but he was definitely there and so.
Yeah.
Maybe you don't list any individual town councillors who were there, so.
Yeah, just the contact town councillors, but town councillors.
Yeah, if we could say, we could probably word it for the minutes that a group of town councillors.
I think also the minutes need to be adjusted because I've got Anya's name wrong.
Oh, yeah, Schroed.
Is that, I'm not going to comment.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Okay, we'll just, we'll be able to see better votes on that. Okay, thank you for that. Well, we seem to interrupt the officer halfway through a report in this place, unfortunately. Where did you go to?
We got to the attendees.
The stonemason, he was there. A representative from Paragon, as they had lifted the stone into place for us, they did that free of charge. We have some reserved parking in the small car park at Borton Park. But we have a recommendation that next year, the small car park at Borton Park is closed to the public to allow invited guests and those with disabilities to park. Because by the time Christine Strain Clark and her husband got there, there was just probably one or two spaces. They had to park alongside the hedge.
I'm happy to go there.
Yeah, I left my car in Badgers and I didn't.
Yeah.
I did walk a bit of the way, not a lot, not far. I didn't, the market looked.
Well, you live on Badgers, that's all. You mean you moved your car from Badgers to Badgers?
I'm crazy, I'm driving down to the end of the state, all across the road.
I'm enjoying my car in one part of Linton Village, in another part of Linton Village.
I'm sure people are going to take a look at it, I don't mind if they do, but.
There were several people that walked.
Robin, Robin doesn't do much walking.
No, you can help her.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm big on other things but not walking. I'm going to take my exercise in other ways. But yeah, I think, to cut it short, thank you for all the work that the officers did putting that event together. It was, it was originally proposed by our now officer, correct, Free Woman of Buckingham, councillor Ruth Neil, proposed it before the last election. And I was reminded by councillor, retired councillor Mike Smith, that it actually was focused in 2010, there was an aspiration to do this, and it didn't go forward, so. it actually was focused in two thousand and ten, there was an aspiration to do this and it didn't go forward, so. So I think at last we've done the right thing.
Yeah.
And and we can we agree that we write to the Carver thanking them for the work they've done. And, um, uh, um, because, you know, that's that's what we should do, thank people for that. And we and and write a short acknowledgement to retired councillor, um, Ruth Neil to um, inform her that the event took place, um, it was a success and, um, and and she made a good influence on the community for her suggestions, are we happy to do that? You know, I mean, one letter could come from the office, which would be the first letter, but it might be nice if Margaret writes to Ruth. Um, would that be, would you be willing to do that? Because, um, uh, you know, you use your appropriate words and, um, just I think saying thank you to people, whatever, and, um, and shall we factor this in at a future meeting, just, um, we will factor it in in forthcoming events. But if anything comes up, we need to do differently, um, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you, I I was, I saw a member of the public who I only know a little bit, only about a week or so ago. And she said to me, oh, I'm really pleased you had that, but we, nobody knew because it was only on social media. So I said, well, it was, it would have been in the last newsletter, but it wasn't when I got home and looked at it. It missed it because I think we'd only agreed it relatively, that we'd only finalized the arrangements fairly late on. And I said to, that's where you'd find all the information, and then I realised, so we need to just watch that a bit.
We could write to him and explain because we were running out of time scheduled to get Carmen done.
Yes.
And we agreed it at the back end of the, the, almost the last but one fight meeting of of events to fund it, we then had to wait for it to go to the Environment Committee to agree in the new council to agree aside, and then it came back to us to agree the funding because we funded it from previous budget, so, um, I think if you if you do know, actually, we should write to and explain and and say that we will do better next year and we'll do something within the paper, but I think it was in the advertiser. Um, so i- if they bought the paper, there's a limit to what you.
Yeah, I know there is, yeah.
I think it's something that, can we just put a note in the file that in the future year that we'll make sure that it goes into the newsletter, um, Susan.
Could it go into, um, the, um, quarterly newsletter? And and explain that due to the shortage of time, it wasn't possible to, um, publicize it before the event.
Yeah. We can just put something in there.
And so the intention is to make it an annual.
There is always danger that people don't always see things, think it was never there.
Hmm.
Um, and we're all guilty of that.
Because the date is not going to change, so it's the twenty seventh, uh, every year forever. So people could just get that in their head like Christmas Day, as long as, and that's it.
Lastly, before we move on to that, I feel we can give the committee a big pang pat on the back for sorting that out. Our present members, because you're all part of it, and, um, nice to have a little success.
Hmm.
Um, do something good and something right and just.
And there was a nice email that we received from the, from Countess Howe, um, who had attended the event, and that's on the end of the report.
Yeah.
We also, also, can we note, there was an email from, um, councillor Caroline Callen now. Who, who, I think it's Caroline Callen now, wrote to us to, um, um, thank us for, um, doing the event. That's right, yeah.
That was Countess Howe.
Is it?
Yeah, a feedback.
Oh, right, okay, I read it completely wrong, well, that's brilliant, good job, someone. Um, um, that's marvelous, anyway, um, I thought it was, because it said at the top, that's the attendees, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just read it at the top and it's just the way I read it, I thought there was no letter, but then at the bottom, we're just saying, yes, you're quite right, um.
Can we agree to recommend?
Yeah, can we agree to recommend? Brilliant, brilliant, right, and we can move on to, um, for five point three, and now we prove I didn't read it properly. And, um, and I'm glad of that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was pleased with the way, way it went, I think there's a good turnout, um. Had some anxious moments about it, this, um, wasn't, uh, I mean, I've not done anything like that before and, um, but I felt well supported by everybody, so that was good. And I think I've had quite a lot of positive feedback. Um, that one of the queries I have, again, I was asked by somebody when I went to something a couple of days ago, um, is it open to everyone? Yeah.
It's a, it's a town event, anything.
So in which case, maybe we should have publicized it a bit more. I think I wasn't clear whether it was mainly for people who'd been formally invited.
I think you formally invite your guests and.
Yeah.
And the town council and the rest of the church is available for.
For everybody else.
I've been to one or two in my time and, um, um, other places and here as well, and I think uh, that's our fault, I think we should have, um, should have made that, I presume that that would have been whatever, but we live and learn. The next year we'll make sure, um, that we make it better, because there are people in in the different communities that we know who would like to come and celebrate that.
And I'm not sure, I mean, again, I'm I'm not sure that it went out on social media and fans, that it was happening. Did it?
I don't do social media.
It went out, but you were having somewhere, I saw it, I read so many things, I think I did see really somewhere above.
Okay.
But I do think you make a good point, I think that it is a community event and it's the, it's the mayor's civic service which the town council support, that it's about the mayor, um, not all mayors have civic services.
No.
I think the other lucky point is that we need to be clear when we are quoting it, we can say everyone is invited to come to the civic service, because it can feel a bit like it's an invite.
Yeah. Yeah.
Feel a bit like it's an invite event, which it isn't specifically.
I think we're, we're absolutely not at the end of Covid yet, and I think personally, I felt that the church was as full as as I was comfortable with this particular year. Um, I think it wouldn't, it would have been difficult with a really packed church.
And that's part of the reason, I think, Margaret chose not to have a school choir and get, then consequences made. Whereas a school choir, for example, would come with a whole set of parents and then you have a lot more people in the room, which bogs it out. So, yeah, I think that's.
I think what we need to do is, Covid isn't going away, it's going to be with us for quite some time, but it may go peak up and it may peak down, but I think what we have to do is take a sensible approach and, um, and if it's our event, we can make our own guidance around it to what we think, um, the service does, like we have to. But but you were basically, um, content with the way it went, Margaret, and, um, and everything else.
Yeah, definitely, and and the parish church made us very welcome and all the arrangements went smoothly.
And any other members, um, who attended, got any points?
I just want to, uh, agree that it went really well, um. You know, I took my son along, we enjoyed every aspect of it, the sermon, the speeches, the question and answer with, um, the doctor from Swan Practice, I think it all, you know, turned, uh, linked in really nicely.
Yeah, it's a good feature to me, which would differ, of course, every year is a different thing, and hopefully will. One day you might not be focused on that, um, but it was right to thank people who've done the hard work and care workers and such like, but thank you for that, and I think we'll take a note down what's been said for future years, and, um, it is a mayor event, this is a thought, so we have to build it around the wishes of the mayor. Right, okay, if that's so, we'll move on to six, which is twinning event, you'll see there. The report within your attendance, if you want to have a few seconds just to glance through it, um. Just while you're looking on, say, we've talked previously in in Action List about things that we've organised and thankfully, sign to properly be here and for the, um, our guests coming. Um, which is a great thing, um, and background reports in here, if charges to fit for it, I'll let Amanda lead on that.
Okay, um, as you all know, we've got a twinning event coming up on the nineteenth of March with, um, the town that we're twinning from France and Germany, and we're having the twinning lunch that day. Um, you've all been sent an email, um, asking you if you'd like to attend and to reply. You've not had it.
Yeah.
Something I said you wanted.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get the email, but I did get, I did get, um, copied in on, I think it was John's response to that email, I didn't, I didn't get the original email.
Right, because the original email came from Paul, yeah, okay.
I think I can answer what happened, it's, it went out before we changed over the email addresses. And I think that some things haven't gone like that because there's things missing. Um, so I don't think, I saw it myself, it went out, I responded to it in my call with a long email. Um, which was nothing to do with what I was being asked, but, um, but, um, but, um, so it did go out, I can witness it went out, but I think them people got our new email addresses, the fact that we've all logged in at different times, I don't think it's, it's transferred.
I've gone, I've gone back through, um.
So you missed on the first one, so we need to.
Didn't get it. And I said that Anthony didn't get it either.
Well, I got the reminder from Amanda, and then when I replied, I, I think I informed her that I didn't get the original. But I did get the reminder, so that's how I knew.
I, I, I don't think I got the original one, and I looked, when, when we got the second one, it said to full council.
Yeah.
And I don't think that worked, yeah.
That's interesting.
Because I'm, I didn't, I looked back as well and I couldn't find any record of having had that.
We are. Yeah, that's what we say, because I got the reply from Robert, I assumed.
Right.
Yeah.
For everyone, but clearly, it clearly didn't, so.
Well, you can't say there was a reply.
I mean, I, I stopped receiving, twenty fourth of January, I stopped receiving emails from you guys.
Right, it's about, I need to, I need to help you with that, because I.
I sorted it since through PC, I've got put me off to work.
We are going to send out a fuller invite this week anyway.
Well, just, just so you know, for clarity, before Amanda finishes the report, we're interrupting the report, um. You don't have to pay, it's a civic function, you're invited as town councillors. So, I mean, that's within the budget, so there's no discussion about that, because it might be that people get confused, it's always been fact, um, um, the event is, is, is funded, fully costed and fully funded. Um, two point two, that's the key areas of the report, which you know is the figures in two point two. You do need to agree those, because you need a minute number for those figures for the town clerk to be able to access the resources to be able to fund it, that's key. So come, if anyone's got no objections to two point two, total budget will be four thousand, we budgeted, but we budgeted, um, um, as it is, two thousand and two thousand, and we're happy to agree.
Yeah.
Um, can we, can we ever share hands for that, so that, you know, that that's, that's, that's unanimous, thank you, it's just, it's money. You need to make sure we get that, the rest of it, we can talk through, where were we then, Amanda, we got down to two point two, which is a matter of people.
Yeah, um, so last week, I re-sent Paul's email out to everybody and it seems that Rand didn't receive it, um, but the majority of people have replied now. I do need to know, um, before the end of this week, whether you're coming and if you're bringing a guest, because I need to touch basically the caterer and let them know how many people to cater for, right.
Um, just on a sort of side note, uh, about the emails as well, I think I told you to say, um, that I didn't get the minutes for the, um, T C and E event, um, which I'm just rushing up on now.
Shall we, shall we agree for the, the, the portion of the meeting that, that we realise that communications aren't working, but rather than keep going back to our own personal drives, we can take those out of the meeting and 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 please email the town clerk and we'll take them outside me, so we get it right, because it's important that people are communicated to. Um, Lisa.
Before we agree that. I know what's happened is the new IT system, they've created these folders, so where we've got our inbox, they've also created invite, they've created groups that they invited us to, so if you go into the full council group, email's in there. So I've got Outlook as a programme on my computer and also the, the web one, um, and under groups, you have full council, Paul's email is in there, put one in, so that's what, we all did get it, it's just that it's now filtered for us.
That, that's because you're technically, um, capable, Lisa, um.
I can show you after me.
Um, yes, um, but I just, let's just agree that we're, we're, we're going to sort this out and that we clearly all need to work together to make it better, um, which it brings us back to two point two, where we were going, which, which is.
Agreed the budget.
Uh, we've agreed the budget, and there's a, we, we can fit a hundred and twenty people in.
Yes.
Um, forty places allocated to town council partners, and the remaining eighty places are going between the two groups of, um, can you handle this, Nina? And, um, Nina, uh. Announce, um, the, the German air, I don't, there's a new vote, I don't know if I can do that right, um, is it nine?
Neukirchen, I'm not.
See, why I was a bit nervous.
I wasn't nervous about saying that, but now I've heard Andy say it properly.
Margaret actually knew how to say it properly, I can do the Neukirchen bit, that's a proper German word, and the other one is one of those highly corrupted old neck names that, um, yeah, sort of like, probably more Dutch than, uh, German, quite frankly, yeah.
I used to live near there for a while, so. I thought it was Fluen, but I'm just how it's written, but I'm not too sure.
That's true.
Well, if Margaret says it's Fluen, then.
Because it'd be really rude of us when they come here, we don't pronounce their name properly, that's, um, um, being, I'd never.
I bet they're used to that.
Well, yeah, they might, but they're probably not used to it being pronounced incorrectly in North Bucks, um, um, so.
Yeah, but we've got Bister and Toaster.
Yeah, okay, um, that's fine, that's it, and two point three, um, which is the, um, twinning, um, association, um, I understand Margaret's working with them, is that correct, Margaret, for the.
Yeah.
And in your dual act control, both being madam mayor and the twinning association, how's that going?
Yeah, I think I, 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 my only slight reservation is I still don't think that we know how many people are going to be coming from Neukirchen, Fluen and Muval, unless anybody's heard anything.
No, no, we don't, I think we've been really clear that what the maximums they can bring.
Yeah.
That, that's really clear, so concern is probably going to end up in, more than, that would be less than the total available.
And.
And also, we don't know how many councillors are coming, so actually, we don't know how many.
No. And 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 related to that, I had, I think I did send on an email I rece- received a few days ago saying, aren't we sending out formal invitations to Neukirchen, Fluen and Muval?
We're going to do that this week.
Right.
We didn't do it last time, apparently, and we came to the last civic event, but we will.
Of probably formal invitation.
Yes, I think that was something somebody said to me the other day, about formal invitations.
I probably copied you in on the.
Yeah, I, I certainly read it.
Yeah.
Um, correctly.
So we may be asking for help, but shall we get the wording right on that?
Yeah, um, so we do need to make sure if we send that out, that it's what we wrote, methodically correct in German and methodically correct in French, which my late wife would be able to have done, I would. Yeah, so we get the wording.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I would have thought that an invitation in English would be able to come in, I don't think that needs to be translated.
Why don't we learn English, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, what you think we should do is, I would have thought that.
I, I think that it's just a nice sort of, if we could do it, um, in English and German, just.
And French, okay.
So that, that we give it, so that it's, it'll recognise their language, it's a big part of communicating, recognizing language.
I agree, but do it in both then.
Do it in both, we happy with that?
Yeah.
Amanda.
Also, the menu and programme of events for that day will be in French, English and German.
That's cool.
That's good, right, we, we, we've been swiftly down through it.
If you need somebody to check or with the German, I'm happy, happy to do for.
Excellent, yeah.
You were going to say that, Andy.
Well, it is my, yeah, of course, it's my mother tongue, so.
We've had some conversation, haven't we, Andy, about my, um.
I'll be emailing you.
Right, two point five, we, we, we agree, um, the caterers, you come back down through it, you're thinking, um, anyone responded? Um, would you agree to go with the caterers who responded? You see the budget that they put in at the bottom, we're fixing very much with what we budgeted for the event. So if we can agree three.
Yeah.
Is that, are we happy with that? So we get the important decisions done tonight, and that will allow, um, myself and officers and Andy to go and look at the. Um, Andy and I have done these one or two times together, and so we can, um, we're, I believe we'll be having. Hot buffet, like we've had previous times, um, and that's because what happened before, councillor Murray and myself. Staggered ourselves, because it's important that the mayor's in, remains to be mayor. And what we basically did is, um, one of us did the main course to make sure people get, and then as it went round. Um, they'd finished their, um, they, they sit down and the old one takes them.
You let the tables go one by one, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, the, one will sit on the last table, one sits on the first table. And that way, Andy and I both get to eat our food and we also get to do it. And then at the end, what presumably will happen is that they'll start, um, serving coffees and stuff. So people have a chance to talk to their guests and, and there'll be a little bit more time this year, because they're on a Saturday, not a Sunday, and councillor Don.
So, I'm not a councillor.
All right, you got me, go on, you've won, go on.
We're saying that, 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 the service will be buffet style. So it's twenty one ninety five per head for buffet.
Yep.
That includes staff as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because they bring waiting staff and so.
Okay, but not glass eye or tape class.
No, that's separate.
And of the quotes we got, this one is the lowest by law.
I'm in the wrong business. I thought you were going to help from all that, I did.
Well, with time factor, if you do it again, probably I can insist, but this time factor, it's, it's, it's just time factor. We can look at this again in years, when we're done through it and do wash it and, and talk about it.
We've got to do the washing up as well.
I think, I, I think that we use your drawers throws and, and, and bucket of no four, which do the washing up. I think that's the way it works.
Again, I stop self yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you can.
So whoever hasn't replied, could you please reply?
I'm coming.
Yeah.
Could you, and if you have any dietary requirements, I need that as well.
Of course.
I've got the seafood, I have seafood, my.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is great, I mean, we have to recognise that, that Margaret's lucky to be, the, the mayor doing this service. Because obviously, um, it was going to be done, um, when Mark was mayor. And because of Covid, he didn't get to do it. Um, and he went over on a separate visit, didn't he, to do the bit there? So it's not unusual to jump between two mayors, because, um, um, I can remember councillor, um, Strang Clark did the. Service here and I went to Louvre and did the one in Louvre, which is great, because my wife. Both spoke German and French, I spoke the French, so fair to Covid when we got over there, um, if you know what I mean. Because it's, it's just, it's just nice, so I think it's good that it's continuing, I think it's great that we're keeping this. And you're in contact and, and, and that we can be a, um, Andy.
Two point seven.
You've gone.
How are you going to do it? You've only got one flagpole.
You can have two flags on the same pole.
Who's going to be on the top and bottom?
Uh, we thought we'd put Germany on top, as that we're signing with them, then Frank, Frank and Claire.
Well, we'll just face that afterwards, um.
Can you not put two, two together?
No. Flagpoles don't work like that.
You can fly two flags together, and if on a ship, they generally fly lots of flags, because they didn't stick with the white flags, don't they, but, um.
I have discussed it with Catherine.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, well, Catherine says it will be fine, it will be, um, and as Catherine knows how to work the flagpole. Um, Margaret.
One other thing, you know, having just mentioned the former mayors who were heavily involved. I'm not clear, how are we inviting Christine and.
Yes.
Um, and I think Ruth was quite instrumental at one point, was she?
She was.
Yeah, she is a member of, well, not necessarily, but, and Mark as well, well, of course, Mark, Mark was invited anyway, so that's fine.
I just think it would be nice if. Um, if, if Margaret could just fit it in to recognise that Mark, you know, would hope to have done this. But you're doing it and it's, it's nice that you're doing it, just because it wasn't, he was planning so much to do it. And then Covid came along and it was, it was all brushed away from him.
That'd be nice.
You know, and, and then the interim year, we struggled to do anything, but it's just nice to recognise people's involvement, isn't it? Are we happy with that report?
Yes.
Um, to move on swiftly, um, and I hope to see you all there. And, and Andy and I, we discuss the other dicks at a later date, that's all I, Andy, we happy with that?
Yeah.
Um, right, so we move on swiftly to, um, to the next, I was going to agenda when it comes back up. Go to the wrong thing, see why I like paper, because I'm trying to do it both ways. Um, um, Platinum Jubilee, um, which is our next big event. Um, we let Amanda get through it and then we'll, we'll, we'll question after, we've had a bit of a habit of interrupting the one, presenting the report. Which is a really good manners and we should stop doing it, um, um, carry on, me and all, me and all. Right, carry on, me and all.
As you probably all know, this year is the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. And the bank holiday that is always at the end of May has been moved to the second and third of June. Um, which is a Thursday and a Friday, so we have got a weekend of events scheduled, um, around those dates. Um, the report tells you what is happening, um, on each date. And at the extraordinary meeting on the seventh of February, it was agreed that music in the market could. Um, be held in the town on the third, third of June. Um, so plans are going ahead for all of the things that are on here. Um, as you can see, from two, you see, two point three downwards. Um, we've sort of laid out what's happening on, on the Thursday, the Friday, the Saturday and Sunday. Um, on the second will be the lighting of the beacon, which is going to be at the church this year. We're not doing our usual beacon in Bolton Park. Um, I'm hoping to have a fancy dress competition for everybody, uh, with a Jubilee theme. Um, Celebrate Buckingham, which we did for the first time last year, will be part of the celebrations on the second. Um, that'll be in Bolton Park in the paddock. Um, the town crier with other town criers across the, um, I think it's across the Commonwealth, definitely across the UK. Um, we'll read out proclamation at one o'clock. And so really the event starts from one o'clock and goes through to lighting of the beacon at quarter to ten at night. Then we've got music in the market on Friday and that will be the usual times, two till ten. Um, Saturday is picnic on the pitch, it was going to be on Sunday, the fifth, but, um, because there's a lot. Um, organisations and streets in Buckingham that are having street parties, we've moved it to the Saturday. So it doesn't conflict with, um, what other people are doing. And, yeah, it's the nationwide big lunch on the Sunday, so it's a packed weekend, but it should be fun. Everybody can wear their red, white and blue and whatever.
I mean, we did meet briefly to, uh, in a, a meeting to do, and of course, it was, timing wasn't perfect for everyone. But we did meet and sort of scope this out, um, in advance. Does anybody got any, um, I mean, this is what we're hoping to do in this order, anybody unhappy with what we've put together? Um, it's basically, if you remember, we decided we moved, actually moved events to match this last year when we were looking at this. We moved events timings to try and, um, A, allow some time for our staff and try and, B, to close things together. Now, um, any questions or, or points to make on the meeting?
There's the, there's the beacon, what, so just a bonfire sort of thing, whatever we have in the proper standard, the. A basket or, what, what's the plan for the beacon?
It came to resources committee, Andy, so if you're on resources, you would have seen it, it was the church put in a grant to resources. And because we do grant through resources, I've agreed our budget now, not the other way around. And, and it, and we've paid for a contribution towards, um, the beacon, which the church are going to light. And we've sponsored it, basically, so, um, and that will allow us not to put a fire in Bolton Park. Which means that when we have the civic thing in Bolton Park, we won't have to clean up before we put the civic thing in there, so it's quite convenient. But we haven't got to tidy it, and also, it probably lowers the carbon footprint, which I know. Margaret and other members around here want that to do anyway, that lowers the carbon footprint. So, um, that's good, councillor Donnie.
Thank you, and just on their website now, the government, platinumjubilee.gov.uk slash events. And we can add our events to their map, so if we could do that, that'd be great.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, we would be the beacon and the town crier.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Margaret, I mean, I think, and Ryan's talk.
Okay, I was just thinking about the street parties, somebody has already asked me, you know, people have to ask for. Road closures, don't they, there's not really been a blanket, you can have a street party this day kind of.
So, yeah, advice out there from Buckinghamshire Council, which we will put out, that was stuff on this this week. Which is that you do need permission, but they're not going to charge people.
You need permission from Buckinghamshire Council.
Blanket road closure order, which they can get under all, because it's an extraordinary situation. They put a blanket road closure order over whole Buckinghamshire and all they basically have. This is raised into it, unless there's a reason why you wouldn't want a, a road closure in the winds low of the High Street perhaps, join. Um, or somewhere, you know what I mean, if there's really a reason why it shouldn't be there, they won't get it, but they'd give it somewhere else. Um, we're, we're, you know, if streets want to close their streets down and they write in. I think it will get added to the road closure order and I think it's already some time back, um, that they're planning to do that. And they've done it on previous such events.
Should we do it for the royal weddings?
They do it for the royal wedding, yeah, they didn't do it for my, my wedding years ago, but I don't hold that against. Um, but, um, but.
Did you ask them though?
I could have, I didn't even think about it, to be honest, um, um, I, I was having enough trouble to tie it. Let alone, um, hanging out, um, right, so Amanda.
We've also had, um, an email from Lionel Weston, who's a member of the public that likes to, um. Join in with a lot of these different events. And what he's going to be doing this year is he's putting Jubilee decorations outside the old jail. Um, he's got a team of people together that will go out and, and dress, um, the area around the old jail, um. Looks, from reading this, it looks like he's starting on Sunday, the twenty second of May. Um, and then they'll come down on Monday, the sixth of June, um, but he's, let's see, what's he doing? He wants to celebrate with everyone on Saturday, the fourth of June at eleven A M outside the old jail. Um, so perhaps sing the national anthem, toast the Queen and take a few photographs. And he was wondering if the town crier would be able to assist, so I'm going to ask the town crier if he can.
Why, just going backwards, official time. Um, that all the town criers can.
So, so, so the, the town, town crier formal event is on Thursday, the second, and that's going to happen at one o'clock.
Yes.
In Bolton Park, so Lionel's asking town crier to come to think two days later on Saturday.
Well, that's fine, as, but what I'm saying is as long as we're not crossing the mayor.
Breaking the town crowd.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, we're not, um, we're doing our, um, picnic on the pitch on, on the fourth.
Councillor Donnie.
Thank you, and can we put on social media that they, they can get a free pack if you're doing a street party? Um, and there's loads of information on here on how to apply to your local council to get road closure order.
Would you do that after the meeting, or tomorrow?
Yeah, there's a press release line that does have that information.
All right, well.
I, that's going out, so that can be added to it, um, I, I did in the, one of the things that I was quite, um. Today, um, I'm calling, I'm calling the eye, Amanda, um, one of the things that's today is that the last time we had any proper royal engagement in town. Was when our late good friend councillor Isham was mayor of Buckingham and the Queen came to Buckingham. Now with the commit's agreement, because I think it'd be quite nice if we used. That photograph councillor Isham with the Queen among our event, because he's, he was our mayor at the time. And, and it might encourage them to come back, um, and, you know, Buckingham area, you know, the town, you know. We're, we're probably well overdue for a royal visit, aren't we? Um, um, if you know what I mean, um, we are Buckingham, they just visited the town but not Buckingham. And so I think that was something we must be due, because we also have got our picture, which we. Which I think Andy had to do with getting done, or we've got a picture which we wrote off for, which is not many people have got. It's actually a picture of the Queen and we've got one, which is a, a later picture of the Queen. I wonder whether we could have that put somewhere on, on display, because we only.
We've got a window there.
Um.
We could do a window display, I mean.
Yeah, you know what I mean, because, because it's not ours, it's, I think it's probably in the library at the moment.
No, it is ours, but it's in the library.
It's in the library, it's ours, so just so that members remember, it's ours. When somebody else says it's theirs, um, right?
It's the town's.
It's the town's, we'll mean it, it's ours, um, right, because somebody will claim that it belongs to Buckinghamshire Council. We'll have a housey, um, at some point in the future, I'm sure, but, um, I think we should put it out there, because it is a nice thing, it's a majesty of the Queen. Close to the modern day, I think we've only had it about two, three years.
I think it would have been Derek.
It might have been, I, I know that.
Oh, it was Amanda.
There was Amanda apologised.
That's okay, yes, um, I looked into getting it for the last Jubilee that we had and that's how we came to get that. And you have to write off to the palace and explain who you are, that the Queen came and visited here.
Yeah.
Um, and you only get one picture in your lifetime, don't you?
Thank you for doing that.
So I think with a picture in there, there, and, and if we can agree, Derek, we can have Derek there as well, if that's agreed. And we also use Derek in the promoting of the sort of, well, do we, um, councillor Bang.
I've got a couple cut out of the cream for the last Jubilee.
Have you still got it? Can we borrow it? Can we borrow it? Can we borrow it?
Is that not a bit disrespectful, I mean, I personally, you know.
I don't know.
I'm not a royalist, but it strikes me as slightly, slightly wrong.
No, 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 I don't know.
I just wanted to find out, do we have like some sort of marketing material, um, you know, the graphics and whatever for the Platinum Jubilee?
Yes.
And so they're going to start being pumped out quite regularly.
Yeah, so it's, it's all planned.
Yeah.
It has a ready to press, the, send on the button tomorrow once we've made stuff tonight.
Is it possible to get like a peek of those graphics or not?
Yes. Would like now, just now?
Yes.
I should have said that, should I?
Can we do it after the meeting?
We could do it, it's fine when it goes live, aren't we?
We do it after the meeting, that's all right, we'll put it up on the board after the meeting.
It could go up on the screen.
Yeah, and we can look at it before we leave, is that approved?
Good.
Yeah.
Um, right, so can I just ask, before we move on, that would it be appropriate, Madame Mayor? Is when we're doing our social media, that we planned that. There was an announcement, um, about the Jubilee and we could get that done in advance. And so that, um, that could go out of the week comments, um, which. Some of those things on Facebook, if you plan them in advance, they do, it's sort of, you can talk in real time, but you haven't actually got to do it in real time, if you know what I mean. Um, because. Um, because mail would be really busy, and if we could get that done in advance, um, all at the, at the question there, because I think that would be a good thing.
What are you asking?
Oh, a video sort of saying this week, that this week's, that, you know.
Such a mare, thank you.
I, I just think that Mayor's our civic leader, so it should be, um, done. I just think that we could use that just to announce people's awareness of it, really. Um, but it's only, it's entirely up to the mayor when they do it, but I just thought it worked quite well. During Covid, we did lots of different things with social media, and sometimes people were engaging with that who wouldn't normally engage with something in paper or something else, and do get to a community, especially as even some of the older people do social media and they can't get out, but they feel included. And that's what I'm trying to get from that. So, okay, so are we happy with all that, we can agree that?
Agreed.
Uh, is that agreed, Sharon? Annie agrees in, 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 in time.
Neither agree nor disagree.
Not my face.
I know, you're not very happy to disagree with Andy. I'm joking, I am joking. Um, go back to that one, right, so we move swiftly on, and that brings us down to Fringe, um, which, Amanda, okay, you're gonna, or do you want me to lead on it? No, you do it. Can you? No, no, um, no, all right.
Are you going to actually let her do it this time?
Yeah. Go on, go on, Amanda, you lead it.
As you can see, there's reports, um, on the Buckingham Fringe Week. Um, the subcommittee met on the, I think it was the tenth of February, um, to sort of plan the events. And that's item four on the report. Um, as you can see, on Saturday, the sixteenth, there might be a ball dance, um, a civic event hosted by the mayor. Um, we've got the Family Fund Day at Lace Hill, which is always very popular with families. Um, still need to confirm something for Monday, the eighteenth. The Oxford Fiddle Group are down for Tuesday, the nineteenth. Um, Mikey Dyson, um, some of you may know him, um, he's been doing quiz for, through lockdown, he was doing the Quiz Night, um, on, on Facebook, and he did a couple for us. And, um, they're very well attended by people, but he's started doing them live in the ballpark again, and he used to do those before lockdown. Um, so because the Fringe Week is, um, a week of events not only put on by us, but by other organisations within town, we're going to include that and we'll let Mikey know, and then she wants to do something special, um, for the theme, for that night, he can. Youth Project with Buckingham School and the Royal Latin School is something that's been going on for, oh, I don't know, fifteen years maybe?
All of that.
Um, it was something that was, uh, started by councillor Sturchbury and John Burco. And it's mainly art and drama, and they put on one evening, um, during the Fringe Week. Um, and I think this year it'll be turned, turned for the Royal Latin School to host it. And then if we want to hold it outside, they've got the outdoor stage that we can use. Last year, we had the Otter Trail, which was very, very popular and successful. So this year, um, it's going to be a Swan Trail rather than the Otters. And that will be launched on Friday, the twenty second, outside, um, the chamber here. And then I'm hoping that, so say the twenty third, the skate park event can go ahead. Um, they haven't said that they're going to do the refurbishment on the skate park yet, and I just need to get, is that right?
Um, they, they have replied, they, they don't know exactly when it's going to happen yet, because they're waiting on the Environment Agency. So we'll just have to plan and go ahead and work with them in the near time.
Yeah.
I wrote to them as well on a separate issue, so one of us will get a response.
And the skate park event is very popular with teens and, um, young people right up to maybe twenty five. Um, the company that we use are professional skateboarders, um, they bring people with them to do demos. And the two that were going to come last time, getting ready to go to the Olympics in Tokyo, obviously that, none of that happened. Um, so they, they bring along professional people, they're not just picking people off the street. But, um, yeah, it's very, very, very popular. And a lot of the younger kids that come look up to the older ones, and the older ones will help them. And there's also, um, like a little mini session that's held by the professionals. And they provide all the prizes for it, it's been anything from a skateboard to a set of wheels for a scooter, um, hoodies, baseball caps, and the kids have a great time. It's, it's free, it's in the skate park, and it's not something where they have to pay. Um, they can come and go as they please, and that's what we've been looking for for teenagers. Um, I think.
Yeah, I know, I was waiting to just, I am this least, so I was just letting you get down through the list. Um, I won't be rude, Lisa, I just let Amanda keep interrupting, and then I start talking and I interrupt the report. Um, Lisa.
Thank you, um, one of the recommendations that we've got to, um, make tonight is what theme is going to be. So my question is, Buckingham is back, I think that's fairly, um, right, but the swanning around in Buckingham, there are some of the, um, events are around the Swan, and if we're going to do the Swan, like the Otters, then that might be a good one, but what does that actually mean as a theme? Paul.
Tell Amanda it's a big. I can't remember who suggested it.
Sam.
Sam suggested it.
Yeah.
I, I, I like to, just because, A, it's got the word swan in it, so it's quite, that's a thing. But actually, swanning around could cover basically anything, so it's.
Basically going around enjoying yourself, the old fashioned turn of the thirties and twenties, which you swan around, and it was like. Now I'm going to get creative, I'm going to take turns coming up. Do you think you should do this first?
Swanning, swanning around is basically wasting time.
Well, it might have been.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I thought it was just going around enjoying yourself, enjoying Buckingham.
Okay, so perhaps we should look at what's swanning around men then, it's not because it's wasting your time, and you, and I think it's enjoying yourself. Margaret.
The first dictionary I've come across online, it says they go and have fun rather than working or taking care of their responsibilities.
Yeah, so they go and have fun rather than working or taking care of.
Now, any, any, any further bids on that, have fun? I thought that's how it came over to me, I can remember watching some drama about swanning, I remember, um, many years ago.
You've got another one, swanning around and swanning about means to me about aimlessly, irresponsibly, in a carefree manner.
Well, we can choose which one we want to do, really, can't we? It covers all eventualities, um.
And how would that then be kind of put into the Fringe Week theme?
Right, I think we've.
Could we, could we phrase it that it's the liberation of our duties, you know? I don't know.
Well, I don't know, that's a big word.
It's residence as well, isn't it? So.
It actually comes from the tank battalion tactics in the First World War.
Dear, now we have got a good album out.
What was the other one again?
Buckingham, Buckingham is back.
Buckingham is back. Sounds like a Back in Black ACDC album, really, doesn't it? Um, um, it was a rather good album, actually, um, anyone who likes some gentle metal, um, um.
Did we get any money for Buckingham is back from the funds for community board money or anything? Remember that one?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Depends what you want to do, but possibly.
Well, it's not a bad thought, um. Yeah, Buckingham back, so do you think, what, we've got, when have we got to send this out and decide on this?
Well, as soon as possible.
So we're going to do the press release on this one, so we're going to press release Plassey Jubilee this week, and then Fringe Week next week, because we want, we want to ask other people for ideas.
Why don't we, why don't we edge our bets then, Buckingham is back, um, um, swanning around. Um, um, and just, um, that, that, that in itself sounds quite nice, you know, um, you've covered all eventualities, and I mean, um, Buckingham is back, so it means we're actually back, we're having a talk.
We've got a week to decide.
Well, we really do the press release, to be honest.
I, firstly, I think that swanning around is a bit of a demoralising term.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know the ACDC number, but Buckingham is back gives me a bit of a Backstreet Boys feel.
Yes.
And Back in Black.
And I quite like that.
Back in Black, it was a good album, I was a lot younger then, um, I thought I enjoyed it. Um, right, Lisa, and then we're going to go for a vote on this.
If we go Buckingham is back, is there anything that we could do? I mean, years ago, we, we did the bags and things like that, could we do something? So we, we're giving something out, so, you know, guys are environmentally friendly theme as well, that we're trying to reduce the plastic, and we did the bags, and they were so popular. We could perhaps have that, say Buckingham is back.
Have we found any, yeah, where did we order them from?
I think Sam's been looking at that, yeah.
They travel the world, you know, it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, a couple of things, I think, um, Buckingham is back, does that imply we've been somewhere else? I see anything.
Back from Covid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see anything, but, um, but I do see that, having looked at a few of the things online about what swanning around means, it may.
Yeah.
It may not be the best.
We've settled on that swanning around can be a major distraction and it needs, so, um, any, and if you've got an alternative suggestion.
Hmm.
Can I, um, seek the committee to propose which things to go with?
Two, I'd go Buckingham is back.
We can put an explanation into it.
We need to vote on that. Gilding the Swan.
Gilding the Swan. We have, we paid for it, um, many years, um.
Wait on, wait on, which one?
Okay, we've got two offers, Gilding the Swan or Buckingham is back, right? All those are Gilding the Swan.
I'm just looking at.
Okay, look here, it is a very good job, internet meetings, councillors look at meanings of words.
About the Buckingham revival.
That sounds like a sixties band. Yeah. Sounds like something one would listen to at some point, um.
I wonder whether you might not want to overthink this too much, and something straightforward like Buckingham is back.
I think, I think, I think, I think, can we take Andy's word?
We have another week to look at this.
We have your agendas and we pray, so unless there's any strong objections to it, are we going to settle for Buckingham is back?
We vote in all that, Sharon.
All those in favour? Thank you, Annie.
Shall we look back? Yeah, can I say a point about the bags, about this idea? Um, I think a few years back, that was one thing. These days, I think everybody has probably fifteen of these bags sitting more or less unused in.
Yes.
In somewhere, and then no, and unless you use them the same one all the time, again and again and again, they're not that environmentally friendly, because there's a lot of cotton goes into them. So I'd be, you know, if we're trying to have a, if, if there's supposed to be a sort of sustainability feel to it, I'm, I know the things are considered to be environmentally great, but they're not actually, so.
I think you make a very good point, I've got a stair hole full of, um, Audi's, um, carriers and bags. Um, and they are really good when you've got to move lots of.
I think they're great, but, uh, as I said, everybody has probably tons of them already anyway. So at least anybody who's supposed to be using, who's actually using.
Well, we, we.
Stick them up at lights promotion.
If we come up with something additional, we've, we've got, we've, we're going to do an environmental event in spring anyway. Um, councillor.
I hope. Hmm, a couple of things, Sue's, Sue's Gilding Lily, I know we've voted already now, but if you give it to Gilding the Swan, Gilding Lily, um, is, if you say some, someone is gilding Lily, you mean that they're spoiling something that is already beautiful by putting, so that, that sort of might would be in front anyway. But, um, yeah, there are, there are, there are other things that we could look at. I think that, um, promoting Buckingham as environmentally friendly, such as, um, we use, things like that.
Can, can I suggest that, and I think Andy, but, but I suggest we put this as a gender item on a future meeting with members to bring forward their suggestions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Andy.
The only problem with that is, obviously, we want to push to get people involved and coming up with things to do in Fringe Week, and time does play.
No, I'm not for another, we're not going to put it into Fringe, we've got, we're going to be doing a whole environmental day when we're doing the, um, Spring Fair.
Yeah.
But, but these ideas can come, you know, they could go into that, or we could do it throughout the summer. Um, but we can't really at a late stage plan an event. Uh, I think it's a gender item to discuss how we would want to feed with that.
Yeah.
So everyone can bring their ideas to the table.
Next gender item.
Next, yeah. So are we happy with the Fringe, we've agreed to name? And we'll move on to item nine, which is, this year's going to be led by councillor Davies, uh, which is the food fair. So I'm not sure who, I know there, you're meeting tomorrow to do the, um, the, um, final. But if Amanda can lead, I think we've got there at the moment, so that it will be Amanda, um, plans for all those.
Right, we, um, food fair is this Saturday, the twenty sixth, from ten till three in the community centre. It's free entry for the members of public to come in and have a look around. Um, the majority of the stall holders are within a thirty five, thirty five mile radius of Buckingham. Um, we have, trying to think who we've got confirmed. We've got.
Oxen?
No, I don't think so, no. Silverstone Brewery, um, a lady, um, and her company is Indian Orchard, and she does Indian chutneys and things like that. She has supported us from day one, never missed a food fair. Yeah, um, Pure Patisserie, which are located on Castle Street, they have a stall. Outside, we've got Baja Cantina, the Mexican, um, band that comes to Buckingham a lot. Um, we've got Roos Food, I think he's called, um, he's a burger van and he's a Buckingham based, um, band, um, unfortunately, Go Greek won't be coming this year, um, they haven't got staff. Um, we've got, so Silverstone Brewery, you got the list, oh, good.
Well, I've got, I've got, I think, Fidji Moments, um, this Fidji Buckingham Avenue, um, Reasons to Season, which is, um, marinades and, um, things like that, and the Chocolate Mill MK, which is handmade chocolates. Uh, da, 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 um, Shaefer Wine Estate, um, Garden to Jar, um, chutneys and jams, um, Two Springs Limited, which is tea, Roos Food, um, Replete Flatbreads, um, Crum de la Creme, which is, um, um, Pissery, eggs and such like, um, I was considering you mentioned, um, Buckinghamshire Recycles can be there, I think. Um, Silverstone Brewery, um, Indian Orchard you mentioned, um, Pure Patisserie you mentioned, um. Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's all, so it's quite good, quite good.
Quite good, so, did, did, did people, did industry take it? I saw them the other day, um, with the weekly photograph session.
The, um, refill project.
I was in there, there's a weekly photograph session in town, and I would pre-seed it, um, um, and I said.
Yeah, they, they got invited but aren't able to come.
Okay.
You find with some local companies in Buckingham, the, the reason they don't come is because they can't staff their shop and store their food there.
And something like that, and it's probably be quite difficult to transfer what they've got in their shop.
Yeah.
To store it and.
Yeah.
I'll hand it to Andy, because I cut him off at the last.
No, that's okay, it's only an idea for, uh, these sort of bags, I thought, recycled water bottles with a logo on just thing, to reusable for the music in the market, you could use the water.
Sorry about that, Andy, I realised I.
That's an idea floating around.
We did have some of those, we, the, the, the load from Buckinghamshire Council, so I might be able to source more.
Yeah, and then, 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 let's run that theme through, um, so are we, are we happy with what's going to happen? Everyone's going to turn out, I shall go down there and see if I have anything to eat, one of my major hobbies, um, eating, um, and, um.
If anyone does have a spare hour on Saturday, um, and you want to come along and sit at the door with the clicker.
Yeah.
Um, that would then free up Bethany, myself and Fran for a little while, um. Because we, we average about a thousand people through the door every year now. And so we're, we're quite pleased with that and we just sit there with the clicker and. All in. The WI are doing the refreshments, so they'll be set up in the small hall, um, selling their cakes and teas.
Well, I believe this would have been our tenth year, but because of Covid, it's our ninth year of doing the event. So next year will be our actual tenth year of running this event. So bear that in mind for next year. Um, because we couldn't do it last year because of Covid, so it's, even though it's our ninth, it would have been our tenth. Um, Margaret.
But it does mean it's the tenth anniversary of the first one, doesn't it?
It does. Yeah.
Which is interesting.
We, when we originally proposed doing this, everyone said it wouldn't work and it did work, didn't it?
Yeah.
Um, there was people saying, oh, you never do that. No one will be interested in that. No one will come to it.
Yeah.
First, first two years, we ran it over the Saturday and Sunday and Saturday was the most popular day.
Um.
We, we do get reminded that we've, um, filled the car park with people coming to it. And people will come in and say, I've had nowhere to park. I've been driving around for ten, fifteen minutes. So.
What, was it a complaint because the stall holders were hogging the space?
No, members of the public coming to it. They come, they come from the surrounding villages and, and. You know, somebody say like Indian Orchard because she's been going for so many years and she goes to lots of different food markets. People follow her.
I mean, it's been a success and we've had many people involved throughout the years. Um, and we miss Terry because Terry is brilliant with the clicker. Um, he's absolutely brilliant with the clicker, Terry.
He might. So he has at the dog show still.
Yeah.
I mean, just asking to come down and be clicking is a bit insulting really, isn't it? But, I mean, we could, I could tell him it's on and come down and be welcome to join. Yeah, you know, um. We're on, you know, we're pleased to see him. I'd do him, like to see him, isn't it? Um. So, so that's that. We're happy to agree that. And, and councillor Davies is going to put some words together to add to the press release. As I think it's important when councillors do events, that they get to actually comment on them. Um, so, um. My Lisa always does the dog showing, Andy always does the, um, fireworks. Um, so it's important. So we agree that and move.
Sue, sorry.
Just a comment. I don't know if everyone knows what Chapel it is. It's an actual vineyard in Gorka. Which is absolutely brilliant and amazing. Who would have thought there was vineyards there? Um.
And the wine is even drinkable, Dave.
They have got another part of vineyard and that weed and as well. And I, I went to the harvest.
Do you think we should have a council vineyard? Um, I, I.
No. It won't be a good vintage.
It would be quite good fun discussing it through council, wouldn't it? The council needs to make vineyards. Um. But, no, that's brilliant. So thank you everybody for that. And, and, um, and we look forward to it. I hope to see you all there on Saturday. Um, supporting, um, councillor Davies and Amanda. And, um, and if you've got any spare cash, buy something. You haven't, don't be embarrassed. Um.
Go for the testers.
Which is always a good thing to do, as I found out in the past. Um, item ten, Otter Trail. It, it's quite a big item here. Um, we've agreed we're going to have one. Um, this is just the cost and we agreed earlier. That we would do, um, swans. Um, and it's got the. The rollover of the money, which we agreed earlier, which we would split between this event and the mayor's charity. Which we agreed, we, we even earlier, we did. So, um. You've read the report. Have you got some additional we've got to add to? Um, I think you've savaged.
So, um, yeah, so the idea this year is to go for swans rather than otters. Um, Buckingham Swan is a bit different to the otters. The, the otters were kind of a one-off in terms of the price and what they cost. I see the swans are more expensive. They, they will work similarly. So the plan is to do roughly the same thing, same number, using clips again, going again for local businesses to sponsor it. Having a trail, using Bucks Floor, um, holding a launch event. Uh, the, the budget this year, we put in four and a half thousand additional funding. And that's really loosely worded intentionally. So the idea is to apply the community board for it. I didn't want to put community board in there as an assumption. I wanted to leave that open enough that if you agree for additional funding and they say no, we might be able to go somewhere else for it. So that, that was the thinking line.
Actually, you see the costs are in there, which will be in the minutes. Um, Lisa was first up.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm happy to go with recommendations and, um. Also, to do with social media, one thing I found with the otters is it was going up so many times, it was almost drowning. Any other events that we were trying to promote at the time, so, um, if we can look carefully at still promoting it. But just not drowning out social media. Um, I remember for the dog show, people weren't finding it at all. Because we were seeing the otter, otter, otter. And then it can get a bit tiresome. It's like, you know, how, lots of, we don't want to. Not people think like that. So if we can look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Any other comments on social media, Andy?
No, it's not on the social media, it's on the cost. So if we're getting, if, and forgive me that. I really genuinely don't know how it works. Um. If local businesses are supposed to sponsor them and they get auctioned off for, uh, for charity. And we're still sponsoring this to the tune of, uh, a significant amount of money. Uh, or the community board is, I don't know how that goes together.
In terms of overall value, if you mean.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, it's like, if it's sponsored by businesses and then it gets sold off, why does there need to be a lot of extra money?
Because you have to budget for it to be able to do it.
Okay, and then that money is recruited.
Well, some of it, but not, not all of it. So, so we, we sold them by, um, auctioning them last time. So the auction won't, didn't get back the full, the full amount, so it's.
So essentially, we're sponsoring those charities.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's, you know, that's fine.
Well, well, no, no, no.
No, no.
Yes, we are.
They're not having benefit from it. So they're not benefiting from our funding.
But if, if they're auction, if we're putting extra money into this.
So we get the option money.
Oh, I see. But what goes to the charity then?
So it's one of the businesses that they, they have a swamp, which is, so, so businesses put them in the window, which attracts.
To promote, to promote their shop.
Businesses and most of the community.
They're no charity.
When we did it, Andy, it was really difficult. I've come, Margaret, it's fine. Um, um, when we did it, it was really difficult. We hadn't got anything that we could actually do during Covid. And, and so what we did, we did this event because it was a way of getting. At the time when people could go and have a walk, but you were not allowed to meet your family, you know, those days. And, and when we done this, it, 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 it was timed beautifully because the members would go out, take part, write down where they were. Don't find them in a sort of safe.
I get all that.
And, and it worked out well and it, it washed its face. And, and we don't run events for profit. We run them to promote the town. Um, um, I'm there.
Yeah, I thought that the auction was for the mayor's charities.
It was fifty.
Fifty fifty, yeah.
We took a decision that we would, um, retain fifty percent and fifty percent to the mayor's charities. Because we were conscious when we took that decision that. There was no possibility of doing events for, for the mayor to do events in the city council. And it was a, the committee felt that was an appropriate use of the funds. That might not always be so. When I was mayor, I wasn't even allowed to have a bucket. I had to run to collect money. I had to organise civic events to raise money because it was seen as terrible. We moved on since that, where we, we support our mayor. So, um, you know, thankfully. So are we happy with the, the costs? We'll rediscover them afterwards. We agreed it in the precept, which you've all voted for. So, um, it's strange to, um, it's in the precept.
I didn't mean to question it. I really just wanted to understand it. So I'm not trying to.
Well, that, that, I, I, it's me, the way I word things. I'm sorry, Andy. Um, I'm not having a go. Um. It's just when I push, I just go, things like that. Uh, are we happy with it? All right, okay. Anyone again? Michelle Hanson?
I'm nervous.
Apologise, Anna.
I did see your hand then, right?
Yeah, it went up very quickly. It was a very quick hand. Hand was, um, of stealth. Um, right, next item is, yes, the green. Um. Next thing is forthcoming events. As you can see, um, that's what we've planned as a committee budgeted for. Debbie, that's too bad to you.
Excellent. I'd say.
Events. How we, how we, um, promote that, um. Throughout the year, I think Lisa's made some comments about timing of the social media. I can't say that I, I understand that there's an algorithm, that when something goes up, people pick up on the algorithm. And that gets priority can affect it. But. I think the social media really good that we do and we've always got something out there which is great and I don't complain to, um, influence it. But what I will say is that it'd be nice if we could agree tonight, but not now, but not in about four months when we get on. That we'll do a press release about the amount of events that we're putting on throughout the year. Would that be agreed? Which would be, um. Any company thing that we did, um.
It was, uh, the mayor first.
Okay, Margaret.
Thank you. Just that there is, on the twenty second of July, it says, launch of Otter Trail. But it's not Otter Trail, it's One Trail.
Yeah, we'll be correct.
So as long as it's correct when it goes.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that on social media, maybe we can do like a monthly calendar at the start of every month.
Yeah.
Say what's upcoming during that month. So, you know, on the first of, you know, May, we'll have what's coming up in May. And then carry on every month. It will just make it so much easier for people.
That is a good idea.
That could be pinned, that one can be pinned from Facebook and then that would be the first.
I think the, 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 we started a bit like this. We are slightly getting them onto the territory of the communication strategy group that do look at.
And we should be able to just drop what we want to spend our budget and do, promote our budget. So to a degree, they are communicating that we can request that, what we want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm just simply referring to, you know, like a Twitter post pinned, uh, in, uh, at the start of the month, saying upcoming events. And the dates and events, something really simple.
Um, I'll go to Ryan and come back to Natalie.
I know on, um, Facebook, you can create these events and, um, it'll save them to your. Internal calendar that you have on Facebook. I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
No, no, I don't use Facebook very much. I set it up, but I just can't be bothered with it. So, um.
But there is also, uh, Twitter, I'm not too sure, but definitely Facebook is, um, they've, they've got their own.
I think what we are destroying is territory deciding to, it's town clerk said to do the case of scratch to do.
That's it.
But I think, but, but I think let's just agree that we, we'd like to have this, those points put in.
forthcoming events.
And then just say that's what we recommend. We recommend that that's what we don't want from our budget. So that it's confident. But are we agreed that, looking at the list of the achievement of that list of events, that we'll put together a press release. Um, around that and, um.
Mind if I have a bit in the press release?
Yeah, and we'll have a bit about what council staff do and, and, and I, I think it's reasonable to say that. Who's on the committee, who'd be helping, if you're happy that the committee members will be named in the event.
Yeah.
In this press release, you know, these are the committee members who we all work with the staff to put this, this, this kind of events on. I think that gives everyone a mention, which I think is important. Um, we agree that, that's good. And so that, no rush to do that, but we can do that soon. Twelve, which I think the town clerk's going to lean on this, is his market fees.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, these are the proposed market fees for the coming year. Um, as you've recommended, to freeze street market pitches, um, as they are. Well, obviously they have a twelve pound minimum pitch fee introduced. So Claire Ross has spent quite a lot of time, now would be doing for two or three years. Looking at what, why, why do we do what we do. The, the minimum pitch fee is because we have had someone turn up with a table one metre by one metre and say, I'm just going to pay for that. And that doesn't seem quite right. So actually, a minimum size seems more appropriate and fairer to everybody else. Um, and so although the budget you've agreed does have income rising by the percentage of the else rises, rises by. Uh, they're confident that freezing the fees will still achieve that because of the increased take up of space to the markets.
Any comments on fees?
No, it's good recommendations.
Good. Um, I would just say that, you know, it's like we've got the Seabirds in there, which.
Yeah.
We agreed to purchase more. I know, first, when, when we first started buying Seabirds. Andy said we bought cheap ones and we shouldn't have bought them. And then we bought better ones and they laughed, didn't we? Um, and then we'd been out and bought some second hand ones, um, which, which will go in the flea market. So we're trying to improve it all the while. And, and can we record our thanks to the, um, market coordinator?
Definitely.
In, in the minutes, what they're doing, the contribution, the massive work that they've done to make the market work where it is. You'll see that when you get tickets. Um, um, I think that's important. So we've done market terms and conditions. So you're happy to agree all those, Johansson?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent. Which then brings us along to next, um. I'm trying to do both to improve my, um, use of the internet. But, um. Right, so if we move on to, um, climate action.
Market terms and conditions first.
Just, just on that.
I thought we, I thought we just took the.
No.
The, um, market fees.
You, you blinked, Fran.
I don't think we've gone through the, the check terms and conditions.
We went with the recommendations.
It was.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I thought we were voting on, on the fees.
Yeah, they were part of the market terms.
It was a separate agenda item.
Yeah, we had two votes.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
We had a vote on the fee. And we didn't have to vote on the market terms and conditions. That's right, twelve point two. Yeah.
No, we had two votes.
I think we did.
No.
No, we didn't.
I put my hand up. I don't know why. I think we did.
Mark, uh, Fran is correct. We did. That's right. We moved on. And I moved on to climate actions. And Fran said that we haven't done market terms and conditions. That's right. Um, so market terms and conditions, which we talked about, we didn't vote on.
But we didn't talk about.
We go by the recommendation then.
Right.
We definitely didn't talk about it.
Well, we talked about the word, anyway. Anyway, let's not fall out over this. Are we happy with the market terms and conditions?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So we're, are we going to vote on that? Are we happy with that? Yeah, councillor Davies, we voted on market terms.
That's unanimous.
Right, well, moving quickly, looking down. Um, thank you for that, Fran. That's absolutely right. Um, but you did that. Right, Climate Emergency Action Plan, which I said, which was in the wrong order. Um. And we've got the action plan before us. Any actions you wish to discuss? Right, yeah, come.
Just to highlight that, as ever, neither has noted the changes and new bits in red on the right hand side, so it should be ready to follow. We do have the annual town meeting coming up with focus around climate action month and the climate champions have met and are discussed. How that will be themed and how that will operate. Obviously, the Spring Fair is now also the Green Spring Fair again.
But if our decision to do that anyway is not there, um, let's not get that in order. Um, committee decided that it themed around the environment. Um, then the environment committee decided that it should be themed around the environment. It's already been decided, but, um. The action plans are for the areas in red and stuff being done. Um, we've done some work with the schools, which is great. Um, mainly this is cycling, but one of the things with this, it's a live document, so it will cycle. And those areas which is to do with this committee, there isn't really outstanding much, isn't there? So it's actually catching up with the stuff which the committee's got responsibility for. Which is um, impressive, so any comments on that? Margaret, choose you, chat hide on the environment, anything?
Uh, nothing immediately, I think.
Well, you let me down. Um, okay, which case, which case, we have to note those terms, that report and we'll move swiftly on to. Tours and information centre, uh which, um, verbal a pain from the town clerk.
So firstly, can I say what I should say at the start, which is send Claire's apologies, because she should have been here to talk through a few of these items, but she's not well. Which is why I'm talking through and why I just talk through the market stuff. Um, so tourist information centre is running as normal. Um, and I think the museum took under house today, so even despite the weather and the rain, people are still coming in. And using the centre, um, Sam, we're still in the kind of period of covering, potentially, so Sam's covering the T I C and the town centre manager. As well as covering Lace Hill, so she she is stretched and getting the small project up and running, that seems to be going well. Um, obviously, sweet collector day, Claire's Hill and Kim's Hill, so Beth is big in the T I C, so the the team are working really well. In that kind of interim period to make sure the T I C is always open, so, oh, we still want to strain them, aren't we?
Yeah.
So between us, we will.
We did through the offices, um. Rich, some time back, we had opportunities when members went in to tours information, just to see what's going on. I wouldn't have encouraged it, but now we're sort of getting slightly safer, probably quite a nice thing to go in there towards the nation. I even do an hour at lunchtime and gives the staff chance to um go off and do something. It's quite nice to meet people who come into the community, it's an opportunity we can do if anyone wants to do it, um.
I I I wouldn't ask councillors to actually man the desk because that involves, I I don't understand the cash register. Or ticketing for some of our events, but you're happy to, very always welcome to spend time with the staff and talk about what they do.
Yeah, that's really what I mean, because quite frankly, they do a lot of work, I mean, I I'm quite happy to sit behind the desk, I'd like to sit there for hours. But um and chat to people, but um the, we do need to show there because it's a big part of our budget, to be frankly honest. And we are the only tourist information centre, I think in Buckinghamshire, aren't we? And where is it another?
Yeah, for further than that.
Um, the whole Buckinghamshire hasn't got tourist information centre, we took the decision some years ago to keep it and. And 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 that's paid dividends for wider community and outside Buckinghamshire and promoted Buckingham. It's been a success, um, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you, just that's prompted me to, I've noticed that there's much more flexibility within the staff.
Yeah.
Covering each other, like in shop mobility and and that wouldn't, what didn't happen before, I don't think. So it's real, I mean, I didn't realise Claire and Kim were ill and um, you know, it's it's really good that people are working in that way.
Always really good at managing who can do what and there's a decision that Paul took to um. Have Sam do the two different jobs and I think you'd you'd know if that wasn't working, then you'd change that up quite quickly, so.
What used to happen, Margaret, is you'd end up with full stops, so you'd end up with, well, that isn't my job, I can't do that, but also. People have been running the disability.
So much trouble, really.
Um, and working from there at different times to keep it open, um, when people are unable to do it. And um, so it's been successful, so.
Can I just say, the other thing on the T I C going forward for the year, having said that, is we are planning to open on Sundays again through the summer. Like we did last year, as we've agreed to, and I think that's one of the things we need to keep pushing out and it'll gradually become a thing over time. Um, we may recruit someone else as we go through, because we are quite tight covering, but it's really difficult to recr- cover. I, what we'd really like to do is recruit someone to work zero hours and just work when we want them to. When somebody else can't come in at the last minute, but those people aren't very, pretty available, so it's just finding a role that we can actually advertise, which is a meaningful role. It's putting work for someone, so it's just finding somebody who the who the right role, the right kind of hours works for, works with.
And I think it's worth noting that we've got a good working relationship with the old jail, so the. There's quite a bad relationship, we actually created a grant for the old jail this year, um, which is rolling. In a four year deal, haven't we, so we know to support them and and we're using that premises, it's quite a good relationship we've built up over the years. So it's a success, um, but as I say, I mean, obviously, town clerk, I don't think we can man the till, so. We just trust us with the probably by why. Um, so, uh, but apart from that, you're quite welcome to visit the tourist information centre, as long as you don't touch the till. Um, um, you're joking, no, I am, um, so, um. With that, we'll move on to the next item, thank you, we are going to be doing a press release on it, which is well overdue. Uh, about more than the tourist information centre, but but I think once we get through the precept. Um, era with Buckinghamshire council precept, or anything, I think we'll sort out what we've actually do for it. Because it's a big thing for Buckingham, North Buckinghamshire. Um, right, okay, we'll move on to budgets, um, if you're happy to. There was a couple of things on those, and maybe if I'm gonna talk to, uh, very good, I didn't, um. I'm gonna go through the sheets one by one, which um, I'm just gonna say, is there anything that you are mildly concerned about? These budgets, um, you go through them, it's pretty much what we do for events, there was some clarity I wanted on. The underspends in these budgets and what we would do with those, are they real underspends? Because we have, we won't meet again before the end of the financial year. And I'm always keen to actually make sure we put in a way in funding which isn't actually committed, because we lose. Yeah, three earmark reserves. So, because there were some figures in there, like, um, we do need to actually, um, go across the financial year, like, we've got money in this. Financial year for twenty, which actually will take place in this.
No.
That's okay, so finally, um. Chart affair, we've got a thousand pounds, um.
So.
Good, thank you.
You might recall that at the precept meeting, you agreed in the, as part of the precept. You agreed to set earmark reserves for the coming year, but those aren't yet reflected in this. Because what we did this year was, we agreed that any underspends from certain budgets automatically going to be earmarked reserves for next year. So at the moment, the T C E, that is the budget for Christmas lights, Christmas lights, which on one of the events, one more is in secondary. Youth council budget, tourism website, access information, accessibility costs. So, to be fair, we usually underspend on the chart affair.
I I know that, but that budget belongs to this committee and what I don't really want it to be.
Well, no, the system isn't that every underspend will.
But the reason.
But the but the chunky ones.
The chart affair is quite different than all the other budget, because quite frankly, we agree a contract with the fair. And if that budget goes somewhere else and then we have an extraordinary expense.
Right.
Hmm.
But also that budget, technically, what their payers also contributes to the road closure and stuff for the road closure, and that doesn't come out of the budget.
I'll just say we put that into earmark reserves, and we have an earmark reserve for the fair anyway.
Do, so you so you want to make a recommendation to full council that any underspends from chart affairs tend to be earmarked.
I I don't, because otherwise we cannot go to them and say that we are running a revenue neutral budget, we're making a profit.
Yeah, but it doesn't work like that.
And if we do what you're gonna do, or suggested to do, we don't do what I'm gonna do, when we have something like an extraordinary cost comes in. And we haven't recovered in the contract, we have no, we have to go to full council, have it from, um. To fund from there, but by ground the reserves, we have the ability to be able to cover those things in the round. And that's how it's always worked over a number of years.
What happened last year?
I know, that's because I was chairman, um, um, and but I just want to put some stability back in.
But the way to do that is committed to recommend to full council that underspend on chart affair this year goes into earmark reserve.
Okay, well, I'd like to suppose we do that.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question on that, because I I'm not very good with budgets, I. But it it's showing that we've already spent one hundred and nineteen point four percent of the budget. And it's got three, three, six, nine committed expenditure. Which takes us as though we've spent more than the budget rather than less, so how can we put any earmark reserves?
But it says if in the next column across, it says that we've got funds available.
No, that's in brackets, that's a minus number.
So how did we end up with a minus number?
I think that is the figure that's been carried over from the previous year. Where we're still expecting, so technically, we've still allocated money to go to T F B for the last four years or something.
Yeah.
And they've never taken the money, so it looks like we've spent money. I know, just trying to keep my voice out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We we can clarify that after meeting.
I I think what we need to do is be clarified that, because I thought there was an understanding. And Margaret pointed out, there's a, isn't, and I feel I need to clarify with that, because the reason I was saying we roll budgets forward. Was to cover eventualities, if we end up in a situation that we have an unexplained cost coming, and the councils absorb that money. Then the committed budgets are unders, we have to then say to the council that we are short of money. And now say, how did that happen? And we'll say, because we didn't carry it forward in our budget, like we have in historically.
Really beautiful chat.
I think we need to have a chat, we're obviously not in able to agree with them, but I don't think we should choose a meeting for that, um. Yeah, are you happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And thank you, Margaret, for spotting that as well. Okay, anything else on budgets?
No.
No.
And just to agree then, that any, any.
So just, just to say, it's like the same things going with the Christmas lights.
Yes, yeah, we're not.
So.
Yeah, it's just not sensible.
And. What's, yeah, there's, there's, there's.
So we're losing money which we can't then reinvest in actually ground to do anything, so that's.
No, definitely.
Losing money out of budgets. But we don't earmark serve, those underspends, we usually have an earmark reserve for Christmas lights, which.
But no, I've just said that there's any underspending Christmas lights, that we already agreed that's going to.
Yeah, it's all it does.
We can't agree immediately, and we can't admit it. And we haven't got the earmark reserve pages yet, so that's probably why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Possibly, although the earmark reserve won't be right yet, because it won't come through until the end of the financial year.
Yeah.
Can we put some in extra chunks of?
Maybe just we are for the financial year, so can I, can I recommend to the committee that any. Underspends or changes within the budget, that we agree that we'll recommend those to council.
You can't just do a blanket one, because then that's too.
Well, we haven't got the earmark reserves here to be able to do it, and we're going to make a financial decision at the end of the financial year, I think we can.
But you you can, you could make transfers to earmark reserves after the end of the financial year anyway.
What's your advice, Paul?
So, so, look, the next, the next meeting, the next meeting committee is on the eleventh of April.
Which will be after the twenty eighth of March.
Which is fine, um, whether, I don't know if we'll actually have to close down information by then or not, Britain might have the information. But it's absolutely fine after the end of the financial year to request that what was an equivalent underspend goes into earmark reserve. So if there is an actual underspend from chart, chart affair.
Should be.
But this should be, and I think, I think that, I'm sure that issue, that it looks like that just because of the previous T F B. Issue, I think that's what's followed through, because it looks like, it looks like from the budget.
But I wouldn't, I mean, we, you you couldn't, and I couldn't have a normal conversation today, because you had to get rushed off.
Yeah.
I mean, I was, yeah, so that's why I'm doing it now, which is unfair on everybody.
But it looks like, it looks to me like there's a budget of five and a half thousand and we've spent three thousand two hundred. And I think, I'm sure that one thousand sixty six figure is carried forward from previous years, but I'm sure that's what it said, there was an underspend.
I still.
What's, what's your recommendation?
So so my, my, for for tonight, if if you agree that if there is any underspend from the chart affair, that goes into earmark reserve for the chart affair.
My seconded that.
And that's.
Yeah, yeah, would that agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, and then we'll, I don't wanna do, I mean, we're both where we are, I I I know, and you believe, you're you're saying. That we can underspend, we can call on them on.
You can request full council to minimize those.
Okay.
We've got him on metals video.
Um, it's because I'm not, you know, coming to the end of the year, then having to go to council and say we underspend. Uh, and we need money, and they'll say, how did that happen? And and that's why I'm doing it. Because I don't really want to have that discussion to talk about.
That's fine.
Right, um, after I've gone through those things, you see the figures for the, um, below. Are there any other concerns as I idolize part of the meeting quarreling over money? Um. Any anybody else that's concerned on that? So we received the five point one, and budget fifteen five point, one point five point one and one point five point two. Are we happy to note and agree those then?
Yep.
Hmm, thank you, uh, new press releases, I think we agreed in the meeting, didn't we, that, that councillor Davy. Fran Davies, Fran Davies, you know, by start, I can't stop getting it wrong, I apologize, councillor Fran Davies. Uh, will we put in a, so that we agreed that we'd be doing a press release on the event. And we've also agreed that, there was a third thing we agreed we were going to do. Uh, press release on.
Future events.
Future events.
Monthly, uh, monthly calendar.
The monthly calendar, that was it.
So it's not a press release, is it?
Well, it is, it is indirect, isn't it, that we're going for the monthly calendar.
It was, it was.
Concert.
The, the, um. The, um, Jubilee stuff. Twenty, twenty. Twenty, bring a bunch of something, fridge, yeah.
Yeah.
We fully agree that we do this.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
And then then the food fair.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all there, I just make sure we haven't missed any. Right, thank you, with that, I haven't got any chairman items, other than sorry for, um, going on at the town block. Uh, about money, but it's not an unusual conversation between me and Portus, usually we're able to do it in the day and need that permission to. Um, um, and I thank you for your attendance, and we're going to put something up on.